Call the meeting order and stand up. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes of the previous meeting.
Move ahead, please.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, no in favor, vote by say nay.
Aye.
Motion's on. Approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Did you say second? We have motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, vote by say nay.
Aye.
Motion's on. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. First up, we have Tom Lamott came in. Can I give a little preface as to why you're here, so that everybody knows? Tom called me last week with concerns about procurement policy at the North Central Housing Authority and asked if he could come in front of the commission with two areas concerned for bringing them in front of us and I agreed that that would be okay, so Tom's here to talk about it.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
First thing I'd like to talk about would be actually the Ramsey County Courthouse to kind of show you how things are done properly. Roger, of course, is your main man here and actually does a pretty good job, but when he decides that, or when you decide that something is going to have some floor covering but a room or an area that he recommends, Roger will come to us and give us the specifications of what he wants. That means that he's going to give the manufacturer and he's going to give you the style, which tells you the exact price of what it'll be. And that'll be the product that he's going to use to get other prices off of it. He will call you in, you come in, measure the area, do your evaluation of the area and get your bid to him at a designated time. Now, it's about as simple and straightforward that you can ever do any type of bidding process. And Roger handles it very good and I'm sure there's other bids that he has to get for other items, but very simple. If you give him the bid, you're low on the bid, you get the job. You're high on the bid, you don't get the job. And I see that he's really protecting the taxpayer by doing it the way that he's doing it because after all, it's about the people, the taxpayers. So he does it perfect, very perfect. There's no argument, no discontent, it's done right. So, that being that, talk about your highway department, your roads department. Now, I know that I don't sell, I know I don't sell gas and I don't sell fuel and I don't sell parts and don't do road work and all that, but I do know that they do some things that might be appropriate for our company and I'm sure other companies. Just to give you a little idea, we did some, we ran some stuff just to see where we're at on purchases from your county highway department. The last purchase was 122-3, 2003. And it was for a purchase of $32.37 and it was paid on 2/6/2003. That's it. So, very simple, there's probably something happening there, I don't know. Makes you wonder, makes you wonder what's going on. Like I say, there probably not a lot of product that they would use from a company like mine, but I do know, because I've been told, there's been some projects out there. Now, I'm not asking for all the projects, for all the materials, but a little something would be nice, make you feel a little bit better during the course of the year. Of course, the next thing is the real corker, of course, it's Ramsey County Housing. Now, the Ramsey County Housing name has been there for a long time and anybody out there would assume that the Ramsey County Commissioners would kind of head up that housing project, but I'm under the understanding that that's not so. And of course, now they've changed the name of it and I don't even know when they changed the name of it. I just found that out the other day.
It's been about three, four months, somewhere in there.
Okay.
They changed the name to encompass the fact that it's not just Ramsey County, it's multiple jurisdictions.
And I understand that, that's very good because then now people would see the name and they understand it. You know, it's not under the Ramsey County jurisdiction, for example, and I really thought it was.
Yep.
I had no other reason to think any different. We've had problems with them and of course now you do have a representative which is Adam and so you have some link to him, you have some link because otherwise he wouldn't be on that board. And I'm glad he is because he can hear what I've found and I've been working on for actually quite some time. I'm concerned about their bidding process and I do know that some people think that they've got a $100,000 bid ceiling, that they don't have to take bids on anything that's up to 100,000. Well, that's pretty nice, but I can't imagine the federal government cutting anybody who's to do that. I mean, that would be crazy. That's not so because I did get ahold of the HUD, the man in Heartland, Arktota, and his name is Joel Manickie, and I think I'm pronouncing that right. Actually, I spoke to him and he was very helpful. And I explained to him my situation and I also gave him the $100,000 mark that he... He says, "No, no, no, any project, any project has to be bid." And that's, and they have to have three bids. And I've got the manual right here and it does say that. And he says it's to protect, again, the taxpayers, which admittedly really makes a lot of sense to me because after all, who's the person that funds these projects? So, I went a little bit further and I made this discussion, I learned a lot from him. He gave me another name of a lady in Denver called, and I tried to call her a few times, a couple times and all I got was her voicemail, but, and now she's going to be gone for several weeks by the sound of it. So, we went back and contacted and went into the computer, actually, and got the, were able to talk to, or not talk to, but communicate with what we wanted to, the complaints that we wanted to set forth on the housing. And also going back to Joel, he said, you know, that's very transparent, as I'm sure you guys are too. I mean, if I wanted to look into something, I mean, it's transparent and because of the taxpayers' money. And we've started that process already and we've also started the process of checking into what I've been seeing for quite a few years. Now, I might be wrong, but I do know one thing. Being a taxpayer in the city of, or in the city of Dallas Lake, in the county of Ramsey, I've never bid a project, I've never bid a thing, never. In all the years, I've never bid one thing.
For Ramsey County Housing?
Yes, not one thing. Just to give you a little example, we have sold them some stuff and I'll do the same thing as I did before, your highway department. The last item we sold them was in 2019 and it was for $20. Then in '17, we sold nothing to them in 2018, which would have been a paintbrush or a piece of metal or, I mean, incidental things, which is fine. I'm sure that they should split that up, I had no problems with that. I've never had a problem with any detail like that. I mean, we have other stores that sell the same products as I do, but I do, would like at least a little bit of it, you know, a little taste. '17, we, looks like we had about 15 sales. Then in 2015, '16 we had two and in '15 we had four. And then '14 was just a few, so we've not ever sold them very much stuff. But the last one, which is 2019, was for $20.
This Manickie, he said that things should be bid all the time?
Yes, any project.
Well, that only makes sense.
Huh?
That only makes sense.
Well, I thought so too. I mean, we're talking about projects, I mean, you know, realize that they...
$100,000 project?
No, no, it doesn't have to be a hundred, no, no.
Can I clarify a little?
Yes, you can.
Just step in real quick.
Sure.
The $100,000 that we talked about before is, there's a difference between quotes and bids. So, quotes would be like when, like obviously when like Kevin wants to go buy something that's $15,000 or something like that, he would get three or four quotes for it, like we always do. And then he would take the best quote he could get, more no different than when we buy a vehicle.
Right.
The bid proposal is a, is like an RFP where it's sealed bids, kind of like we do on any big highway project. And that's $100,000.
Right, right.
So, the quote process, you're correct, that the, anything needs to get quotes, but a sealed bid process and that's the number that I was using before when we visited.
Right, right.
Now, in this situation, how, and I looked up HUD procurement stuff too, I wasn't able to talk with him, but micropurchases up to $2,000, you could just get a quote and then just go buy stuff. $2,000 to the $100,000 and I think this is a little out of date, I think it's up to 125 now is when you're supposed to get a reasonable number of quotes, as many as you can get up to three basically within your jurisdictional area to try to buy stuff. And then past that is the sealed bid process. So, if you had a big project, you know, whatever it might be, then you know, a concrete lane or whatever, you would do that in an RFP fashion, sure. So, in this situation specifically that we're talking about, it was a carpet procurement and I agree, I don't think it was necessarily done correctly and I'm not going to hide that.
Well, we don't know that for sure.
No, not for sure, but at the end of the day, this, it was a specific, one purchase and we've talked about this, we've got Renee, I know she's our board chair here, we've talked about this at our last board meeting quite a bit.
Oh.
And about how this wasn't, we didn't feel as though, if we're going to have quotes, we need to get quotes from you, we have to. So, our director, to our executive director was, from here on in, we have to get quotes from everybody regardless. That's local, that does business in that field.
How long has it been going on?
Well, this just came to my attention in our last board meeting.
Well, how long has it been going on? I've been here a long time.
I've been here for 56 years, so.
I don't remember the last time, at least since I've been on, that we've bought a large carpet project in, to be honest.
Oh, you haven't done one right now?
Yeah, right now, that, this is the only one. Other than that, I don't recall the last time that we bought a project since I've been here.
But there's been a lot of things, there's a lot of things that go, I'm sure. But the fight I was trying to make with Roger is not necessarily, it doesn't have...
Oh, he's very thorough, he's very thorough.
Oh, no, he's very wonderful, I have no, I have no qualms about it at all, no, no. But his, you know, there's a lot of things that will bid, that may be just over $1,000. I know, or maybe it's $1,500, maybe the next one, we don't know, but it doesn't make any difference.
It doesn't.
No.
That stuff should be different, so.
He's got, he's got a way of doing it and as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure other people and Tom probably have the same opinion as I do.
I'm sure they do.
It's done straightforward and he's done it for a long time and...
From a business owner point of view, I don't mind getting beat on a bid, but I want a bid.
Right, right.
I go through the same process with the city, you know, they put out a thing, we want to buy 29 trees and this is the kind of tree we're going to buy and, and okay, Morrissey wins the bid or I win the bid or whoever wins it. And I don't have a problem with that, but I want a bid.
Yes, great.
And obviously somebody way back when dropped this ball and somebody should have caught this a long, long, long time ago.
Well, so just to clarify on my end, was there any reason stated for why apparently certain companies and businesses weren't being approached for quotes and others not?
At that point, I don't believe there was a specific reason stated, no. And that's why we said, you know, we should have sought quotes from multiple businesses.
Chris, I can tell you, my incident with her was several years ago. For whenever she started, I don't know how long she's even been there, to be honest with you. But in fact, if you walked in, I probably wouldn't know who she was. I met her one time. She came, she bought a bunch of vinyl planking and don't quote me to 100% on this because it's been a while back, but it seems to me, I heard about being trucked in, you know, these pallets of vinyl planking. So, I called her and I said, "My goodness gracious, we didn't get a chance to bid on it. I might be wrong about this," and I think she said, "Well, I found a deal on the internet and I couldn't pass up..." But you know, it's a while back and there's been a lot of water splashing between these years since then. So, I don't want, but that's, it seems to me that's the way we left it. Well, I wasn't really kind about that because I didn't think that was the right way. I said, "How would you know that somebody in town couldn't sell you that product just as cheap? And at least it'd be somebody with a face and if you had..." And then I said, "What about the warranty?" What, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a warranty, I know that. But it is, it is what it is and I don't want to keep homing in on it here.
No, but I...
But I've started my process already.
That's fine.
In which I need to do and it's going to take a little while because these people go move fast. I found that out. But we do have a link now that we can, and the way I understand it, we sent some paperwork over, emailed some stuff and they turn around about 24 hours, they said, so I'm hoping to get that back for a month or two.
You mean on another project that you're bidding on?
No, no.
No, no, just an appeal or something, what do they call it, Tom, is it like an appeal or something?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, so the actual project itself is...
The project, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I was unaware that you were going, you had made, mentioned to me that you were going to go through this process, but I didn't know you were going to start it.
Oh, yes, and I think we should.
Yeah, and that's why I was...
I really...
And you know, maybe I run into a direct law, I don't know.
Well, and like I told you when we visited about it previously, I understand where you're coming from and I don't disagree with you. I can't necessarily change other than through that appeal process what happened previously.
Oh, no, I understand.
But I, but we can make that change going forward to make sure it's done right from here on out.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's all I can guarantee is that now we will make sure that it's done correctly going forward, but the stuff that's already occurred, other than the appeal process, I don't know what else, you know, when the projects have been done and...
They should be taken to task around that.
Well, that's what I was going to point out, I mean, somebody better set this director down and you know, you, you're in charge of this and you don't know the rules? You don't, you don't understand how this functions?
I don't know if it's necessarily a matter of not knowing how it functions.
Here, this is...
Well, obviously, I mean, if we've gone this long...
Yeah, but we have to talk, we have to, I mean, we have to ask questions.
Yeah. The one question should be, this is a government entity, every government entity I've ever dealt with bids and she should know that.
This is the paperwork that we've got from the FHA HUD.
Yep.
But you know, and that's for, it's for bidding process and what you're supposed to do and so on. And we didn't get it all, so you, it's quite a bit. I'm sure it's probably a lot of work, but we only took the stuff that we have that would have been, you know, connected to what we, what we were interested in.
But a $10 paintbrush is one thing versus $1,000 worth of carpet, that's entirely...
Right, well.
And I can't imagine that a director that's in charge should know this.
The only thing I will say is, and coming from sitting on that board, is every year we have an audit and we have a HUD spot check and they pull stuff out of anything that has been done in the past year and it's never thrown us a red flag since I've been there. That's all, that's all I, the one time we did get, we did, I remember on one of the audits, it was, we had windows put in, we did a quote process, but we did two separate sets of windows in two separate buildings, if I remember correctly, and they told us we should have bid those together as a large project versus two smaller projects.
Right.
And this, because the same person got them, but it was, it was quoted out correctly, it just was two smaller projects, certainly a big one.
And they covered that very clearly.
Yes, and I, and I, it's in there, it's a driver at least procurement...
You don't buy $5,000 worth of stuff and bill it in increments.
Yes.
Because that's, you know, and that's a known one. We've bid a lot of projects and we've bid them all over the state and in other states. I mean, we work all over, Wisconsin, we work in, my God, we've been in Fort Yates and Minneapolis, but sections, you know, so we get out a lot and a lot of it's a bidding process. And Newtown, we've bid a lot of stuff there, so.
What's the project that the $100,000 about?
No, this isn't a $100,000, I don't even know how, no, no, this project was something like, I think it was $12, $10,000, I can't remember the exact number.
You're talking about...
This specific project that brought up the issue.
Well, no, the issue has been brought up before, but this was, I just kind of let things go because I thought maybe, well...
Can you, you say the issue's been brought up before to her?
Well, the only issue that was ever brought up to her is when that vinyl planking checked. And of course, maybe I wasn't as nice as I should have been, but I wanted to know why and I'm not sure that she bought it from the internet. She may have pulled me that, I don't know. And then I, I can't, I said, "Well, my God, for taxpayers, it should have..." Even as my competitors, you know, my, these guys are my competitors, but they're not my enemies. You know, so, you know.
Yeah, like you said, there's nothing to say that you both aren't going to pull the same product out of the same building, he just put his on the internet, you never got a chance.
Oh, that's possible, I don't know. I don't know all of it.
So, because I deal with that.
But this transparency, parentsy issue is, and we can go back a long ways when we, and we're going to ask for everything at least seven years back.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. To clarify though, do we know how many quotes were received for this project?
Is there paperwork?
We didn't before.
There should be paperwork backing it, yes, of course, anything HUD related is going to have backing paperwork.
But what I'm trying to say is, I mean, were several things, you know, approached and quoted or did they get one quote and take it, is that possible?
In all honesty, I think it was a one quote and take it. By the time it came to us as a board, I think the product had already been ordered essentially and we felt like, what are we going to do now?
Well, then that is definitely not right with it.
That recognizes you guys.
Yeah, and I agree and that's why at that point in time, we had the discussion that we can't do it this way. And it's just a matter, and I agree that maybe we need to, as a, as a local entity, change our guidelines so they're even stricter than ours. So, we maybe say we need to get three quotes or at least as many as we can locally all the time, pack down to maybe $1,000 or something instead of that $2,000.
Yeah, well, like I said, Roger, I mean, he doesn't, he, if you're about, he doesn't know what the bid's going to be, of course. But there's been some of them just over $1,000 and if you ask him, I'm sure he'll clarify that. But then there's been some $2,500 and so on and so on.
Well, it all depends on how big, most of the time in the courthouse, it's generally when we're carpeting a...
A room or something.
Yeah, like an office or whatever, they all...
Listen, I commend him on his, the way he handles it.
Well, and I appreciate your coming and visiting with us because this is something we need to get fixed and I appreciate it when you talk to me because then I've been starting to do some backtracking through this public housing stuff too, procurement and making sure that, you know, we're going to have to fix how we do it to make sure it's done right. I mean, that's just plain and simple. I don't disagree with you on that part at all.
Listen, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Do they have any further questions, I guess?
Oh, I'll get out of your way.
Yeah, and I'll try to stay in contact with you because we're going to be meeting Thursday morning, I believe, so I'm sure this will be, lead to a...
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
No, I don't have any.
I think I've got you on the phone.
But thank you, yes, you have, yes. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And then I did have pause in for some of the folks that were on this other board and they never even called me back. Of course, they're not getting paid a lot of money for being here.
You got that right, but sorry, response later.
Thank you, Tom, thanks, I appreciate it.
How you doing?
Good, yep.
Okay, I don't see Rob in here. So, we'll move on and maybe he'll show up in a little bit. Chris, you're up next.
I'm going over the multi-hazarding gate and stuff that I was brought up to you guys. A few meetings back when Mr. Schwartz from Nexus Planning stopped up and gave a little short description of what he was covering, so I'm going to go over that stuff kind of first. Some of the bids I received was Nexus. I should, I should say this first, the, or reiterate, it was a 25% local match, so, you know, we're looking at a bigger number, a lot of this is all grant money coming back and if we can do in kind, that's where, you know, we get people to show up. It'll cover the 25% the counties cost. So, Nexus came in at $40,000. KLJ came in at $34,000 and Heartland Plank came in at $22,200. So, with that, Mr. Schwartz from Nexus came very highly recommended by a lot of counties. Like he gave his little presentation to you guys, reached out to the counties that he just got done. They said his was by far the most thorough. Plans that they've done and of course, these are the same ones that keeps reoccurring every five years. So, I kind of was looking at it, you know, KLJ came very well, highly recommended, well, the... Basically, the big difference is, is we're not looking at $40,000, we're just looking at the 25%. So, the county, let's just say everything goes bad and we have to come up with $10,000 for Nexus, $8,500 from KLJ or $55,500 for Heartland. Since this was a sales or it's not a, I can't remember the wording I used, but I just lost it.
Function-based lecture?
No, I'm a little over here looking for it. They, this is one of the plans where you don't have to use the very bottom bidder and so it's a pick and choose one if you like. So, basically, I just wanted to talk to you guys about these numbers that we're dealing with currently. I know they want to start the planning process hopefully soon this spring, so we probably have to... Think of what we want to use as a county with these number, or these three people that are in.
These three companies all submitted these bids, not knowing what the bottom one was.
Correct.
Maybe we should have the other two companies come in and give us a presentation also.
I asked and they...
Hey, Ron.
Didn't seem that way.
Have you talked with any other counties that have used this, the low bid, to see what kind of work product there was or...
Yeah, it didn't come highly recommended. I know I talked with Joel, Joel was super busy and I, I don't want to, I don't want to say anything bad. I mean, when you're, the guy's busy, he's doing a bunch of planning and maybe that's why he couldn't come in, do a presentation, but if he'd like, I can reach out to him and if you want a presentation with Heartland too with Mr. Hanson, we can do that as well.
Well, if the third one came with zero recommendations, I think we can pretty much...
Throw that one out, yeah.
And that was the last one we received, correct, Chris?
That is correct, that was the dead last one that I received.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, I have some opinion that you should, if you were talking to the other emergency managers and the work product, go to the other two, it's been really good. if, if you were talking to the other emergency managers and the work product, go to the other two, that's been really good, and that one wasn't very good, then obviously, we probably wanna look at the other two. And see, you know, so maybe, maybe if we can talk KLJ into coming in and.
Talk to them, much more about coming in.
And see if he'd like to come in.
Yeah.
And give us a little presentation, if that's okay with them.
Yeah.
See what kind of service he could provide, cause I mean, they, they're in the market for being in the right area, so.
Yeah, this got done, going through with twenty minutes of not bidding projects and, uh, the dam all ready, that's right.
Very true.
Very true.
But yeah, I'll reach out to, uh, Joel and see if he can squeeze in a time, um, within the next month, so he can get that, get on top of that one. So then I'll move on to the next thing, we, this has kind of been an ongoing process. Um, is the security cameras here at the courthouse and at the memorial building. Three different bids, um, I got one from North Dakota Telephone Company, they came in at, uh, tremendously lower, they were at twenty-eight, one seventy-six. Uh, New Vision out of Bismarck came in at forty-eight, six fifty, seventy-six. And Lakeside Lock and Key, also Devil's Lake, came in with forty-two, eight ninety-eight.
They all got about the same warranty?
The warranty I do not know about on, on Lakeside Lock and Key, I can definitely get a definitive answer for you guys on that, but New Vision was five years. Uh, North Dakota Tel was three years.
Three, you said?
Three, yeah.
And the other one was five?
Five.
Okay, correct.
Is that the same outfit they put it in before?
No.
Nope.
That.
Company is default.
When we put it in the last time, we couldn't get the telephone company to look at it, couldn't mark.
Even though it was, when there was a concern or something?
No, but I mean, they wouldn't even give it a bid.
Oh, 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 you mean they didn't even.
They wouldn't do it, I don't know why, but we don't know if they were contacted, or. I asked the question. I know that.
So these, these are all essentially equal technology, equal everything, pretty, pretty close with it?
For the most part, there's a little, there's a little differentiation on the one, uh, basically, they wanna separate, the memorial building from the courthouse, just with equipment wise, which.
The telephone wants to do that? They want it all together?
Yeah, definitely. As best as possible, there's, it's currently split currently, slightly. All hardware, all the recording is in here, but there is a switch over in the memorial building. It'll be basically the same. And we're gonna be removing up there in that, uh, that room closet, that'll be all coming downstairs to the radio room. Cause being a closed, closed closet will melt up that equipment pretty fast.
You're gonna use the same wiring?
Most of it, yes. Thankfully, there was, uh, the last time when you guys had the cameras installed, it was all Cat five or Cat six put in, so it was, uh, that's the new technology, that was a good, one good sign.
Candy, you know those cameras really come in good when they were put up? I mean, they were pretty clear, weren't they? Was it just a poor quality camera that, that just deteriorated? Is that what happened, or does anybody know?
I just think over time.
Over time, they definitely have, have seen their longevity, their shelf life. Um, some of the cameras, I would say, there probably could have been a little bit better quality once they've got put up, but it's hard to put high dollar outdoor cameras inside that hallway, little. You know, but now.
And that's what they are, is outdoor cameras?
They're indoors, out slash outdoor. And now pretty much technology has brought everything to outdoor quality cameras and vandal resistant cameras.
But to my knowledge, telephone, we couldn't Jacob get interested, I mean, that's what we were told.
That's what we were told.
If I remember right, I could be wrong on this, but they were willing to do all the wiring, but they didn't have a source for cameras at the time, I mean, cameras.
I just don't think, I don't think they had expanded that.
Right, they didn't into the cameras, but they would have done.
Just wasn't the service they were.
Right, right.
But they did all the wiring.
I could have sworn they did the cameras at the school, but it's not on the school board, and I could surely find out, I know that.
Maybe they wired that too, you know, just the wiring part.
And I do know from contracts with them for years, they had an old camera systems, the old Pelco cameras, they no longer use those, those are archaic. That's with the old coax wire.
I was just gonna say, this was kind of in your wheelhouse back.
Oh, very much so.
Do you, what's your opinion?
My opinion, um, it, it goes with kinda like the law enforcement center. If you want the best of the best, you pay big money. And the best of the best actually, um, would be the company that wired the, the LEC, and that was eight hundred thousand for the LEC, so I guess. I'm guessing it would be.
Don't try to swallow that one.
I'm guessing it'd be quite extensive for this as well, cause they'd probably wanna rewire completely from scratch, and that's where you get a lot of the cost is in, in physical labor of it.
Well, I think, you know, telephone's local, and if you wanted to come in and give us a presentation, I wouldn't be against that either, but, I'm not afraid of this bid, and granted, I'm sure you'd take care of us, so.
Now, this is something that was not included in anybody's budget, correct? Or was identified as something that is desperately needed?
But then in conversation too, that the cameras that are in the building don't work at night.
Well, and, and that, that's something that I'd like to see changed, is having a, a, a skylight on each hallway at night that's left on, that can't be shut off. Just for those purposes, whether you get a low light camera or a, or something of a lower quality, if you have some sort of illumination on there, it's gonna show up better. And it, it gets really dark in these hallways at night, and we have people that work after hours. I was up here once, electricity was off.
Yeah.
Oh my God, you don't know how dark it gets.
Yeah, it gets.
Are these all, are these infrared cameras, by any chance?
Every one of the cameras are infrared, they are, and some of the cameras that were put up in the courthouse currently are non-IR cameras, which I, I cannot believe got installed, but they did. Um, that was a prerequisite for all these cameras to be vandal resistant and IR, so they will operate in pitch dark. Cause they're self-illuminating IRs.
I think we should have the telephone company come in and answer our questions.
Okay, I will definitely.
They don't need to, if you did anything, I think we should just have them come in and answer our questions.
Wonderful. Well, I just, I can't figure out how the prices could be so different. If they're doing substantially the same work, it's, it's remarkable how much cheaper it is.
I gotta radio a comfort of double, I mean, and all that.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a problem with that, I'm sure, it's like an entirely different system or plan that they're utilizing that would make the prices work.
I think they wanted to really come back, and they, the original cameras that, that were in here was from the telephone company, those were the very original ones, but I don't know how many were in here. Uh, they were, and I'll, I'll admit it, Pelco cameras is known across all of security, they're a thing of the past. And it was hard, and it was a growing pain, I think, as well for the telephone company as well, as for the security company, uh, the security camera company was getting into the new digital cameras, and they were still running on a lot.
I, I think those were, uh, original part of Homeland Security grants. After the nine eleven attacks, there was money just thrown at you for building security and everything else, and that was one of the identified needs that we identified way back when. And, uh, yeah, and that's what I remember is what, it was the phone company that did all those, and, uh, you know, a lot of coax cable.
Yeah.
Which part of helped pull some of the wires in here, I remember.
Let's just have them in, if that's all right, you, okay?
Would you, would you like another company to come in as well?
No.
Okay.
I think it's fine to set them in, come in, the, the one thing I would question is, so the, you don't know the warranty on the second one, but the top one is five, right? The, the top bid was a five-year warranty?
New Vision is a five-year warranty.
And, and N D T C was three.
Three.
I mean, if you're gonna have them come in, we can ask them the question, but, you know, is it possible to maybe put extended warranty on it, you know? If their price is that much lower, maybe we can buy a little more warranty on them and still be far under the other bid, you know, just to.
Yeah. Maintenance agreement to cover repair and labor, to repair this equipment for three-year parts and warranty, or three-year parts warranty.
Yeah, so may, maybe there's a way we can see if there's an extended warranty a little bit longer, just so we can give ourselves a little bit more coverage, cause, I mean, at the end of the day, we know that these are gonna have maybe a ten-year life, and then they're gonna have to look at them again, so if maybe you can buy out half the time, that would be good.
Well, buy up two more years is not gonna cost twenty thousand.
No, but that's my point, yeah. I think we could easily, maybe, but if that's an option that they provide, or maybe it's a manufacturer's warranty and there's other options, I mean, but that'd be something we can ask for branding and options.
What was, uh, New Vision using for a storage? Um, I didn't notice a hard server on that.
They were gonna use, oh, I think it was on there, wasn't it?
Oh, you got a thirty terabyte hard drive.
There you go, three.
On the N D T C.
Ten terabytes.
Three tens. But I didn't notice.
That is a, wow, I didn't even realize that myself.
Candy, what budget, are we gonna take this out of there, would you suggest?
That was a valid question, but I do not see that on the map.
Maybe see, once the general board is done, how much money is left in, you know, funding improvement?
Yeah, no, we could, we could use general fund dollars, I suppose, cause we usually run under budget at general anyway, so.
We usually, we usually rather, you know.
Well, after looking at the cameras, I guess, I understand we didn't budget for it, but I think it would be beneficial to get it done. But it's just a matter of how can we get there in the most, you know, affordable way possible, but, and it's good to see the telephone company giving such a little bid.
Yeah. You know, like I suggested too, if it's, you know, like, whenever the work starts, you know, either build part, build part of it this year, or build the rest of it right at the beginning next year.
Do you have a timeline of when they could hit, once the bid's accepted?
Most of them were, let them know, um, some were, you know, the most, all three were, we could probably start with them.
Well, you would think too, I mean, it's, you're not, you're not having to pull all brand new wire and all that, I mean, the, the ability to just change cameras and then redo the, where the recording and everything is done is, that's gonna be the largest part of the project. Camera replacement, isn't that?
There's, there'd be a few, um, a few new ones added, there will be a little bit of a working, work in progress, like putting one up on this, this corner of the building. And some wiring will be a little bit, but beyond that, I think it'll be a quick transition. And also was gonna say too, um, I'll meet with the security, um, this, uh, camera.
Our committee?
Committee, yeah, and, uh, see if there's any additions or other ideas maybe out there that they wanna see.
Is there any way some of this could be covered, like through that court grant situation?
Possible.
I mean, they probably would cover the whole thing, but at least maybe they would cover a portion of it on that floor.
As far as security, it's possible that they would cover some of it. But we don't necessarily know.
Well, I mean, if it, if, like you said, if it, if it's a deal where we have to wait, but we can get a grant for it, I mean, we might have to look at that too, or we can look at options at least, but if we know that might be an option, then we're looking at. Well, it's something to look into.
If we do take a look at that, I think, uh, that would suggest maybe a couple more cameras on that back door, where they bring in prisoners.
Absolutely. Yeah, so if we did have a situation, we got, we got visual lines, so I don't know. Okay, well, then let's talk to the telephone company, I guess, and bring them in, and then we'll kinda go from there and look into funding mechanisms. All right, is that it, Chris? Any, any more questions for them? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gavin, you're up.
Uh, first off, we need to set the, uh, per mile rental rates for leading township frozen for this year's. And I included a spreadsheet of our costs, actual costs for her. And this prediction, what, that I think they're gonna cause for twenty twenty. If y'all had a front end or reviewed it or saw it, I think the operation of our costs have gone down, we switched to a different style of cutting edge now, and they go more as fast, so that helped us a little bit on our operating costs and operation. And of course, utilities went up a little, or keep going up a little. And then same way with the administration costs and office supplies, they don't go up hot very fast, if you look a little bit. Then the bottom graph there, or whatever, that is what we actually, the four hundred and thirty thousand, seven seventy, that's what we actually spent. Blading roads, we had that October snowstorm, so there was one hole. A lot of the townships didn't have their last blading, so that's why there's such a difference in cost from last year. Plus, uh, April was not, the first couple weeks of April weren't ideal for blading either. So I guess our bottom line is our, our actual cost in twenty nineteen of blading was five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents per mile on the township system. A little bit down from last year. And our projected costs for twenty twenty, up on the top graph, again, projected a hundred and forty-six dollars an hour, so our actual cost will be, the loan payment, the payments was into three new blades, took that up a little bit.
So that, that one forty-six per hour translates to what do we think per mile then, for actual cost?
Yeah, the, last year.
It was five eighteen, so probably more back up into that five, high fives to sixes range again?
Right. Well, we're saving a little bit on the different cutting edges, it'd be free using, and maybe a little bit of fuel, a little better fuel economy. The new blades, but not greatly.
Okay, any thoughts, I guess, somebody?
One thing I was, the townships that didn't get their sixth blading, we just credited them. Uh, we did, we did actually refund the money back to them, so you don't see it in a line item. You know, it doesn't come back in as a credit or a positive to our line item, it's just a credit to their account when they buy something else, and it's taken off.
So we started out at what per mile then, what we said that last year, six thirty-four?
No, two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five per mile, a hundred point five per hour we charged last year.
I think, was, was our thought last year, we wanted to try to get up to maybe fifty percent? I think, was, was our thought last year, we wanted to try to get up to maybe fifty percent or something like that? We wanted to kinda inch towards that, but not, not move drastically quick.
That's kind of been our goal for the last, many, many years, since we started this.
Went up fifteen bucks, huh? What do you suggest, Gavin, this year? Ten?
Uh, yeah, I think we probably get by with five. We bought those three machines, which, you know, there shouldn't be any repairs, but we got the cost of the payment. But the repairs will be virtually zero.
Go to two eighty now.
Yeah, that's what I suggest, two eighty and one thirty.
Does, does making that much of a change, does that get us any closer to fifty percent, or does that just keep us in line?
Keep us in line, probably.
So we have to go, I have a vague recollection of having a conversation with you that, like this last.
Yep, we did.
There's a lot of that to happen.
Thor asked, I think, exactly that same question too.
Yeah.
So, so we probably would like to go up a little bit more than that, I mean, not substantially, to start heading in that direction, if that's kind of our stated goal, right?
Township's not really our expenses though. Do we? No. Just trying to look and see what we've, what we've kinda been here, percentage wise over the years, just kinda eyeballing it.
Seems like we're always kinda in that forty to fifty range, never quite getting to fifty, but we're always kinda bumping it slowly to try to get there, so.
We had that big jump last year and I, I can't remember the reason, I assume that was because we did more than six bladeings in most townships. I mean, the weather was right, the, it was drier conditions, that type of thing.
We did one right in the fall, November, first part of November, I think a lot of roads had it, during the October, and that really helped those roads for the.
Well, why, why that six thirty four is there, you said? I think we got extra blade in there.
But we, it really helped those roads, so pretty mentor.
So may, maybe the actual costs are gonna come in closer to five seventy five or something, if we're kinda on the same scale. So maybe two eighty would get us pretty close to fifty percent, maybe in that range.
Well, that's fine, I just thought it'd be a great question.
Yeah. It's a good point, so we'll need to watch anyways.
Well, what is the wishes of everyone, I guess?
Well, you know, last year we went up fifteen. Kevin says five, he wishes to split the difference in fifteen, cut fifteen and a half, so we're happy with what we did last year, that's seven fifty.
Four years ago, when like townships didn't get their ten thousand dollars from the state.
Yeah. And Kevin's gonna have to have quarters to do much of that.
Whatever, let's make a motion go.
That's right, man.
I guess I'll, I'll make the recommendation of two eighty and one thirty.
I'll make that one.
Second. We have a motion in a second to set the year rates for blading at two eighty per mile and one thirty per hour, further discussion.
And then just, uh, the private blading is five dollars more than that, so that would go along with, you know, a one thirty five.
Okay. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries.
All right. I need to order the oil and the filters and service three of our, our three machines that we're keeping. And that's gonna cost approximately two thousand five forty six fifty two for the filters, the oil and everything we need. So I guess I'd like to motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, approve discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Suppose we can roll call that, because we're paying, we're not paying to go, we're just approving it.
All right, and the next issue, the three cats that we're keeping are, need the valve set on the engines. We did it once at two thousand dollars, now they're up to five thousand dollars, so we're scheduled to do that again. And, go ahead.
Go ahead then.
And to replace the regeneration diesel particle filter, which is that big filter on the fuel exhaust system that is high dollar stuff. And their, the diesel filters themselves are twenty seven twenty. The, uh, set the valves, it's a fat, six hundred and thirty dollars each. So to do that on all three machines, it's gonna be seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
Who do approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the work on the, uh, three cats, um, older machines, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries.
And then I looked at the prices for, uh, fork, forks for our payloader. Our culvert saw come all banded together and it's, our skid steers have got long enough, heavy enough forks to pick them off there. So we ended up breaking the bands while it's on the trailer. I mean, this is all safety stuff, but we can use the forks for the, uh, payloader for more than just this. And it, we're gonna be handy for a lot of things, but anyway, the quotes that I got, I contacted Erskine, over in Erskine or whatever town they're in, I'm not sure, Erskine, they didn't have a quote, they don't make them. Ironide or Bobcat was ten thousand one hundred dollars. Our old equipment was nine thousand nine fifty and Butler quarter eight thousand one hundred. So I think it's something we can really use.
And it's a universal fork, for the pit, most any loader?
Uh, for anything with a Pemberton hitch. It's got that hookup on it, so it'll go onto a quick Pemberton type hitch. The city has those too, so.
Who is the ten thousand one hundred?
Ironide, Bobcat, whatever.
I'll agree with you. Ten thousand?
Ten thousand one hundred.
So we're approving the, the bid from Butler then, correct? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the bid for the forks from Butler, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign.
And that was eighty one hundred, correct?
Eighty one hundred was low, yes.
That's for some reason why, uh, paragraph doesn't have the iron, how it did.
Oh, yeah, no, I just got that today.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Okay.
We had the, on our O B trailer, a valve that wasn't working properly and we had to replace that, so it, and it cost two thousand ninety five dollars. Plus break.
Who do approve?
Thank you.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. Replacing the valve. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries.
And to review the bids, the results for paving project that ran between, I guess, all the costs, all of them online.
May River, I believe, did, at one million sixty, purchase hundred and seventy thousand, forty four dollars, ninety four cents. And they were just like eight point eight percent of your estimate, which worked out to be sixty six thousand. Well, what, an engineer's estimate, I mean, that's where this, um, well, it's sixty, or seventy thousand dollars higher. They were up, um, about point one seven percent over our estimate, so they were real pay, there was two more bids higher than that, yeah.
So we had four bidders, so we got a good, good price on that.
Nine each was a little over there.
Yep.
Second was mail?
Yep. And straight up, and then some for specialties.
Now, order.
What was that figure, I think, one million six hundred and?
Six seventy.
One six seventy, forty four, forty four, ninety four. Not with the app also.
You said mail was about seventy thousand higher, so they were like one seven forty, something like that?
One seven, three nine, seven one, seven eighty two.
Where's May River out of, just for curiosity? We're based out of, uh, M I G, but I've got a little satellite, small satellite.
They're part of, uh, M D U, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Owned by M D U.
I, I think they have, they have different offices, I think there's a web of them, I think they come from somewhere else, but most of the stuff we hear is from the M I G.
Yeah, and they've done stuff in the past.
Yeah, they're, there's, um, E, M Z eight on the, on the east end.
I try to sometimes wonder why, you know, an out of state, two hundred mile away deal beats a local one, I kinda wonder sometimes.
Right.
Yeah, they're pretty much, I guess, with other aggregate suppliers, they'll do the thing after, usually hit it.
It is good, all about the aggregates and what are coming from.
So they've got a bunch of large pits up at Fordville, so.
Yeah, they, they've got the ability to source the product locally and that keeps the cost down.
Well, that's as close as we get, I guess, if they're used.
Yeah, as local, as local comes around here.
Most of it's four, five minutes away, get turned to coming. But they, they do a fast job too, so I mean, but maybe even a little faster than the main one, and a lot faster than some others.
Which is nice.
Yeah, but.
Plus, the, the faster they get work done, the less time engineers spend out there for the hourly rate they charge, so.
Yeah.
In other words, we're looking to short you, Paul.
No, so we actually, we actually adjusted our estimates, I would get a bid.
Okay, well, I guess.
So, along with that.
They were close, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really close.
Maybe they're still using that bid on Cheyenne, right?
Ah, no.
They've got sources there too, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'd say, but they got the right product there, I suppose, Peking, or not Peking, uh, Oron.
Yeah, I, I think they have stuff up north too.
Yeah, they do, in Fordville and that area.
But there probably are two projects in the area?
What's that?
There probably are two projects in the area?
Um, May River got twenty one, north from Cheyenne up to a five fifty seven intersection, I guess. And then I think.
U S two.
U S two going west, I don't remember who got that.
Oh, that's a good take.
And nineteen miles of full reconstruction.
Those are the bigger ones in the area.
You said there's something to go along with?
Yeah, we have, uh, we got the, um, acceptance, uh, this market wants us to accept that whole bid and use our contractors, so we have to have a motion to sign this acceptance resolution.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the little bid and, uh, sign the contract. Need a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, I don't know, you guys probably have, I got a couple more items here on my agenda, you probably need to get copies of it, because it's all new stuff, but, um, at the next meeting, we'll be paid for the final payment on our, our final payment to the state for the paving on our, on the terminal road, or all the paving we did in eighteen, which amounts to one thousand three hundred and twenty nine dollars and twenty two cents. But they want us to sign a letter stating that we use local funds and not, you know, we use that fair dollars to pay our share of that project, so we have to have a motion to sign that letter saying where our funds came from, so.
Second. Okay, motion in a second, the only question I would have is, what, what's the other, what would be the other option if we didn't?
Well, I would think we.
We use federal funds to offset it?
Federal funds to pay for our share of federal funds.
Okay, I was gonna say, because let's, are they asking if we opened up our own checkbooks or?
Or, you know, once in a while, I don't know.
Okay.
Copy fund.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, sign the sheet for the, I guess, key, closing up the eighteen project, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries.
And I will be up next meeting, so thinking ahead, um, weight limits, probably need a motion to put our weight limits on at the same time as the state highway department. But they're done, that's usually around the middle of March, but depending on how the weather goes. So I need a motion to put our weight limits into effect at the same time as the state highway department.
Okay.
Who do approve?
Second.
Second.
Second, further discussion.
Just the ones that are exempt then, we're gonna leave the same weight limits on them as spring and what we had last spring?
Yeah, they'll be the same as last year, there is a little bit of exemption on most of them, but they're still, the ones that are built up stronger are higher.
They're all right.
We're gonna label the one oh five fives higher, basically.
Right.
Yep.
They're all gonna be the same as last year then?
Yep, same as last year.
Yeah. Any other questions, further discussion?
Just a heads up on that, if we did wanna change any of those, it would take a motion from the commission to change anything from last year.
Okay. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries.
And along with the weight limits again, we normally send a letter to the highway patrol, asking for their assistance on the portion of weight limits, so I guess I'd like a motion to go ahead and send that letter when the time comes.
Who do approve? Second.
We have a motion in a second to send a letter to the highway patrol, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries.
And the last motion, I need to, we normally ask for bids in March, so have our bids for our gravel projects, for our chip seal project, pot mix and road oil, so I'd like a motion to go ahead and advertise in the paper for that.
Second. We have a motion in a second to advertise for all the different things we need for the year. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries.
And the last thing I have is more of a heads up, I, I don't know if you guys are aware of it, and I'm not trying to throw anybody in the bus here or anything, but the SWAT team that's in our blue building, I don't know if you guys know that or not, but our local SWAT team is headwore out of that blue building, out of the shop. It doesn't bother me, but I just didn't know if you guys knew, so I was gonna give you a.
That little building in the mark, or should you call it blue building?
Yep. So there's, you know, half dozen, eight guys in there that have their equipment, their SWAT team equipment in there. And it's fine with me, I don't have a problem, but I just wanna know what make you guys aware, they're supposed to do it even there.
Is there a lead agency on that?
Gosh, that's a good question, I do not know. I would assume the sheriff, but I don't, I honestly don't know if he is.
Sheriff, because I, I believe, I believe it. Out of the Dallas force.
How long they been there?
It's been almost two years now, so, I mean, I'm paying the heat and lights there, which I, I gotta pay, I got a truck in there on the other side, so I gotta pay the heat anyway. That doesn't bother me, that's not the issue, but just wanted to make sure, you know, overall.
Well, they've got equipment in there, huh?
High dollar stuff, yeah, guns and vests and helmets and ammunition and.
That's why they don't want them to search and rescue building that sort of thing.
Could be, I'm, yeah.
They're gonna lock it up there.
It's locked up pretty good, we can't, well, I've got a key, but the rest of my guys don't have a key. I'll go in there and check the heat and sewer, make sure it's not, toilet's not running, whatever.
All right.
That's it.
And one thing too, I will not be up next, Chris, me either, so would you guys want me to schedule North Hotel and see if K L J can make the next phone, or?
That'd be fun.
I would, yeah, whenever you can be here, I suppose, right?
Okay.
So maybe two for now, that'd be fun.
And that, uh.
They'll give us some time to clear, probably get funded.
That hazard mitigation planning stuff, is that time sensitive?
It's fairly time sensitive, yes.
Fairly time sensitive.
Sooner the better.
So it'd be better if, if we still want a presentation from Mr. Guanbeck, that he be here on the third, regardless of your attendance?
That could be, that'd be fine, if you guys are okay with it.
I'm fine with that, I mean, if, I think if we have any other questions, we should be able to reach out to you separate from meeting to inform ourselves if there's any remaining things we can discuss.
I think it's a very low dollar amount, uh, between the two. I think if Chris had a recommendation of going with the Nexus, the guy that came, I'd be fine with that. Anybody else would be? Well, since it's time sensitive, that hazard mitigation, if it doesn't get completed and approved through the state, um, would jeopardize our federal fee of dollars coming in if we were to have a, an incident.
Yep.
And that's due by, to the state by when?
Um, I got all the preliminary work sent in, I I'm waiting for round one to get back, and I think that should be March one, I I would assume, when they want to roll the next phase.
And the difference between the two, uh, local cost share was between ten thousand and eighty-eight hundred?
Eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred?
Yep.
Fifteen hundred dollar difference.
Are you making that a motion?
I am, I'll make that a motion, I'll go with uh the recommendation of Nexus, um, planning.
Second.
Okay, the motion in a second, further discussion.
When do we have to have it done by then?
In order.
If it's time sensitive?
I I don't, I don't have the exact date, I don't have a. I personally don't.
Before July?
No, no, it's before that, it's it's early this spring, um, I had to meet the first deadline of October, um, or November one, if I remember right, um. Hold on, see if I can pull the email, I'll tell you. Sorry, I forgot that prior to this.
I remember, excuse me, I just remember when he went through the his presentation, he had the timeline of when it had to be accomplished, and that's what I was looking for, maybe?
That's right.
Can you guys, yeah. Yeah, I think it was on one of the last pages, had a timeline for us.
The projects do, it takes basically two years to get it done.
Yes, we're.
Two years?
It's one whole year of planning.
Yeah, so basically start date is October of twenty twenty, but um, we, it I guess it depends on when the state wants us to have their, the name to them by who we're gonna work with.
That was what I was looking for.
Yeah, we found the information.
No, I don't know, I don't know the for that, but I know that she, they're right, though, it's depends on.
Middle of Indiana plan to N D D E S slash FEMA by October twenty twenty-one to receive final approval no later than December twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, it's a, it's a full year process to go through.
Well, unless they want.
We have to worry about two weeks, don't we?
Should be fine.
Oh, you should be here when we do the interview with them? Absolutely.
Okay, so where are we at here? We have a motion on the floor right now.
Well, I I signed it, it's for discussion.
Yeah, for discussion, we have a motion out there to accept the contract with Nexus.
involves your department, you should be here, you can't make it, first meeting in March, we'll do it the second meeting in March. And they don't make it, I guess, I guess we only have one choice, and they're not interested, they're sorry.
I mean, as long as you think we've got enough timeline, be by that point in time.
I think we'll be all right.
Okay, so Jeff, where are you at on that? Since you made the original motion?
Um. You think you're okay, Chris, uh, you know, we can delay it, but uh I guess I'd like to know for sure. Because if, if they can't be here for the in-person interview then, or presentation, then we're just spinning our wheels, um, but they all withdraw my motion, okay?
Motion's been withdrawn. So, yeah, well, pretty much we know if they can't make it by that second meeting in March, then we'll just, we'll know who to go with.
I'll, I'll get a hold of.
Tell them it's time sensitive, we wanna see them, and if they don't wanna.
Paul, do you think you can make it? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea.
No idea?
Paul's not in charge of that department.
No, I mean, at the time of the vote, it was a little bit, he just didn't really, he didn't finish up.
Well, I I guess I don't, I don't know the exact timeline either, but I mean, it appears as though they don't start the actual planning phase work until October one, so I I would think that we at least have a little bit to make our decision on who we want to do with, I would guess. So.
Some tests are made, it's good.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's move on.
I mean, for those in-kind costs, I know that uh you know, the attendants have to meetings and stuff, and some, maybe they don't actually have to take that, some days for funding to manage that.
They have more work to do.
Okay. On to unfinished business, Home Rule Committee discussion. Have you contacted people?
Um. Yes.
Hey.
Any answers? No.
Unanimously, no?
Um, I have not heard back from Jeff Wall, Paula, or Susan.
So that gives us an answer from?
Anthony.
Herman.
And Rodney and Sammy.
Well, and I think, yeah, for what we are being needed, you for the first time around, sort of, but.
Yep.
Well, that kind of answers Jeff's question in my book. The public wasn't pushing it, why should we? Obviously, the public doesn't push it there. I mean, two of them should have, two of the ones that shouldn't, that didn't answer should have been the first to step up and answer.
How long will you contact them, I guess?
Um, the Friday afternoon we asked it.
Okay, well, it's been decent amount of time for them to get back to you, then.
And I know Susan's been, you know, the office too, so.
Well, you've got, you've got sixty days to, from the date of the motion to put together.
Right, so we've got at least, at least one more minute, two more.
I I I think to to benefit it and and further it along the line is to give citizens their, the reason that we want it. Not just because it failed by forty-seven votes, but here's, here's what it can do for the, for the county. And and this is why we want to bring it back. And I, and I think we have that time to discuss that, have those discussions before the deadline to get it on the November ballot.
I agree.
Do you think?
Right, but we still, according to Century Call, we still have to empower the charter committee, and that, that.
Now?
Well, we've got sixty days of when we made that vote, which was.
Oh.
Last meeting?
Two meetings.
It was two meetings ago, so this, this, we're we're sort of starting to run out of time in terms of needing to select uh some number of people to be on this committee.
See, here, here's what I I don't like about that process, is that if it was so important, it should have been addressed and on the agenda prior to amending the agenda of that meeting. And would have had some time to think about it, discuss it, um, gather thoughts on how it's gonna go before made that decision. You know, I I just don't like how quickly it was decided that all of a sudden we're gonna go ahead and and bring that forth and and empower a committee to go forth with the thing. Because it it's, it's a big deal to county government. And so I guess I would have liked a little more time to contemplate and think on it than just have it something that was put on the agenda as an amended agenda item.
I'm sorry, you did that way?
Well, you you know, I I'm very much in favor of the idea of Home Rule, and I think we had, there's a lot of benefits for it. But in that regard, I think it's being how big of a major change in in county government it is, I think that a little more time to, for commissioners to contemplate that decision would have been nice to have that heads up.
Well, I mean, the was, you know, it has to come back before this body, which means you, you will have a month or two or three to see how things are going to to contemplate before you will vote on whether or not you want voters to see it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't really see how we've lost anything by reempowering a committee at least.
But, yeah, we haven't had any positive.
Well, I mean, you've got to remember, Jeff, we asked those those individuals that were on that committee to spend hours and hours and hours and days, and I would bet far more than them thinking that Home Rule's not worth it, it's them thinking, oh goodness, I don't know if I can go through this many meetings again, which of course is not necessarily our intention, but that's what I would think if I was a member of the public, is, oh my God, I'm gonna lose another month of my life? You know, to to talk to.
We're not gonna do that, are we?
I hope not, maybe, but all I'm saying is, and I, and I think, I really do think that everybody that was on that committee was pleased with, and maybe this is just my own subjective opinion, but was relatively pleased with what came out.
Pleased with the results, exactly, I was too, um.
How many is there? Yeah, six people that you contacted and responded to?
One, two, three, four, five, putting.
That have it, or responded?
One, two, I'm on her back from three.
Three. Give me a name, I'll call them, each day you name them.
Well, I know two of them were on vacation, so.
But I mean, did your number then?
I know.
Contact them first and see if they want, you try to email.
And and March third, there'll still be, we'd still be within that sixty days, right?
I think so.
Would it be okay with, with you if we, we set a drop date day and and each of us take a name if we want and and move it forward?
I I think that's fine, um, I mean, are we absolutely confident that we only want people that were on the last committee to be on?
No, I I I think we can reach out to new people.
Well, you're gonna have to find two, at least.
So.
Because Rodney, Rodney and Anthony don't.
Is there a set number you have to have?
I, yes, but I don't remember what it is, I think it's at least, at least five, I think, is what it was.
Besides?
Commissioner. No, just total.
Total. When Burley can only put theirs together, if I remember correctly, they only had a five person, two of them were commissioners, three were from the public.
All of us were listening, or looking, I agree, interesting fact I learned last week that the state of North Dakota in these three months, two months of the year, took in thirty-five million dollars in the sales tax from internet sales? Thirty-five million in internet sales in two months.
Two months, first two months.
That's the whole state, my dear. I dropped my jaw when I heard that.
To approve five members at large.
Yep, that is what it says, within sixty days after proceedings have been initiated for a Home Rule Charter, the governing body shall appoint a charter commission to post at least five members to frame the charter.
Okay. What is the thoughts, I guess?
How do we move forward?
I said, how do we want to move forward?
Five, we, buying five new people.
Or do we want to, I mean, do we want to do the same what we did last time, which was advertise for it, or do you want to just contact people that were already on it, or do you want the bulk of it to be commissioners? Do you want any commissioners on it?
Contact the rest of them that are on it, how many more are we dealing? Got two, three? We've got three, it said yes.
We have none at this point.
No, we have none.
Right, because we don't, we have not really prescribed, the only thing we decided was, oh, we'll contact everybody that was on it, see if they want to be on it again.
And and two out of the five said no, and the three others have not returned.
And two, two of those with no return were on vacations.
Well, I mean, I would like to be a member of it because I still believe in it, so I'll volunteer myself as one of the people, unless somebody has a strong feeling that we shouldn't have any commissioner on it this time.
I thought we already did, made that motion.
No, we haven't empowered anybody, it was just a thought, we openly discussed how we would want to structure it, basically. If if we empowered it, or if we.
What's advertising?
Well, we pledged money to do basically that if we wanted to.
Okay. Okay.
Do we, are we absolutely sure we've got sixty days, or was it like a I don't, I just don't want to run out of time? It'll be in like sixty-one days or something like that, since we have.
What was it, the fourteenth of January?
We're the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yeah.
So.
We got to make.
Seven. Four, five, six, seven, eight. I think the seventeenth of March will put you fifty-six, may tell. Two, that's on the seventeenth. On that meeting.
I'm gonna have a motion to go ahead and advertise for people to be on the committee.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second, further discussion of the motion. Okay, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
So you still want me to try to make contact with what?
I think it would still be beneficial to do that, yeah, but but then advertising would be on top of that.
And just have anybody that's interested submit a letter of interest to the office office.
Okay. Very good, new business, approve Bremer Insurance and City of Devil's Lake buildings.
The Bremer Insurance portion of it is, is, we had them break out um, from our original building, we had them break out social services. So that and that was, um, we were waiting on figures because we inherited three, four vehicles, three vehicles.
Inherited, that's a nice way to say it.
Yeah, yeah, well.
We got burdened with many.
Yeah.
For vehicles?
Um, three, I think, yes.
Yeah, I think it was three.
So we had to wait for new a new bill.
Okay, so this, so what is this bill, this is just for the?
That's just for.
Human services only?
Yes, yes, and it's, um.
Is this part of indirect cost, or is this, this is gonna be locally borne?
No, it's part of indirect.
So that's part of the twenty-five percent that comes back in the indirect cost form, but it's not ever gonna cover the indirect cost, basically. Okay.
And we thought it was a good idea to just simply break it out, keep it separate.
I think that's a good idea. I know what we spent on, on specifically for that unit, I think that's beneficial. Okay?
Move to approve.
The motion and the second, for both bills, is that okay?
Move again?
Yeah.
Okay. For the Dyke, O N M, and Steve Bremer Bill, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries. Post their credits.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Uh, review resolution from N D D O T.
That's Kevin's.
That was yours from before? On on the eighteen thing, okay?
Yep.
We'll cross it off.
We doubled he was on.
We doubled it up, okay. That's no problem. Okay, uh, V S O Joint Powers Agreement. The only thing I was gonna ask on this in. The only thing I was gonna ask on this, and when is the, when is the last time we looked at, you know, cause we based it on percentages of, we pulled the total amount of veterans, and then we did percentages off of the three counties, how many veterans live in each place. When's the last time we adjusted that, when we set up the contract? I would assume it'll probably cost us a little bit more, but I think, you know, we're being, we could be fair if we're gonna do it that way. We should probably see if we can, do we have to have this approved today?
Hmm, no.
Okay. I mean, just so we can figure out.
For the counties acting on theirs today?
Nope.
So we would have some time in between before that first meeting?
One, two months, so.
Okay, okay.
It's the same, the old batch, the batch?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Yeah, and, and this, and this year, it will probably, I mean, for the other counties, they'll probably come in under budget.
Yeah.
Because of the wage, you know, the wage difference.
Yeah, it's a good one.
You know, but I also explained to them, you know, to let the auditors know that, um, we don't know what kind of benefits he is going, he is going to take.
Okay.
You know, where, where Stacy didn't, you know, he didn't take any health insurance, he didn't take, you know, any of that kind of stuff because it was all through the VA, so.
Do you motion to table it?
No, I can, I can.
Yeah, and, and.
I can, I can check the numbers again and.
All right.
Well, that number six tells, says that it's gonna be according to the existing compensation plan of our county. So that covers us on the cost of the health insurance and things that, you know, under that portion of the benefit. The question is just, um, you know, what the, what the split is, you know, updated split basically, is where I was thinking, so. Okay, I think it'd be fine if you wanna make a motion to table it, then it'll just roll.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second today, table, excuse me, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
And an update on the V S O is, uh, the new, uh, person is Mr. Bryce Crosby, he'll be starting the next Monday, the twenty-fourth. So you'll have, uh, four weeks or sort of job shadow with Stacy.
That was the first choice from Cap Craft, yeah, Bryce Crosby.
That was for sure, what?
Yep, yep, they put out the, put out the thing next day or whatever, he accepted it, so. Yep, I should've probably paid that out before we started talking about this, I apologize.
No big deal.
Okay. Uh, okay, visitors and delegation. Further discussion? Announcements, anybody got anything else?
From the law enforcement center in the morning, nine o'clock.
Free donuts.
Free donuts, that's right, there's always free donuts. Uh, nine o'clock for law enforcement center tomorrow, um, tomorrow we are interviewing for zone director.
We are?
And surprised by this? Yeah, I've got nothing, I was, I've got nothing.
Forget my address, or?
They might've, I don't know. Unless I got the date wrong, but I'm pretty sure.
Just one candidate, right?
Yeah, we just had one internal candidate. Four o'clock.
Stacy gonna be there, like they were in Fargo?
I haven't heard from them, but, and, and, and I haven't, I haven't heard otherwise, I guess. I would be, I, at, at, last I knew, they were gonna be in through conference call. But I, I don't know if they have planned having somebody in attendance.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, pretty cool. Um, yeah, um, the only announcement I would have, other than that, would be, um.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, yes, four o'clock. Um, I won't be here next week, just so everybody knows, I'll be at a conference in Georgia, so. Um, Jeff will be able to probably do far better than I do. So, but I will, I'm gonna make my best attempt to call in, I, I assume I'll be able to, so, but I'll, I'll let Jeff to run the meeting. And, uh, go in there. Uh, other than that, anything else?
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion carries.